So, you know, y'all didn't hear, we have to, or we chose to cancel anyways, the planning commission meeting for last week. We had the planning commission that we had in town and everything. A lot of concerned people, not whether or not we were gonna be able to have that. Eventually canceled it, we wanted to do business at the meeting, the regular work session meeting, the planning commission next week. We did have a public hearing, we'll have to reschedule it, but everything's worked out. Uh, the items that were on there, you know, hasn't changed, um, y'all are, should be fairly familiar with these. There's a minor subdivision for UNRAs on, uh, Rainbow and Shores. The lot line adjustment for Scissor Tales is a very minor subdivision, or no, very minor lot line adjustment between two lots. There's a variance for Gator District as part of that soaring Scissor Tales subdivision that was, uh, part of the land slot. And it had been preliminary plotted with Rogers for six foot side setbacks. And whenever they came through and used our standard specs, it went to seven, so they're requesting to have those changed to the six foot side setbacks that were in preliminary platter.
What is the normal setting?
Seven.
Seven?
So it'd be, yes, for us.
For Rogers it's six.
Yeah.
We can do things with the rock wall to take it down, widen the sidewalk there, put it back up and reinforced.
That was part of the being pushed to work with R-DOT to get ownership of main streets, so we would do things like that. Yes, at some point I would love to. Are the developers or people that's working on it going to potentially do it?
No.
Yeah, the short answer is they maybe could do some work to it. I don't know if they'd actually get an R-DOT permit to do it, but also at the same time, it would be someone doing work outside of their property. So we have to look at it like that, that too is, it's not their property. You know what I mean? So, so that, that's a tough one too, where when people want to develop those things, once we get there, we need to have those standards and stuff in place.
Two, three, two or three years ago, I meeting it all. And then the mayor informed me that R-DOT might get upset because it's their property. Well, if it's their property, go ahead, come clean that up. It makes our city look off the ground.
I've called them and there were times that I'm like, it's grown up, we want to get it cleaned up. And they said, go ahead and do it. We did it. And then I got a call that says, that's ours, we pay people to do that and you don't need to be cleaning our sidewalks.
Let it get your hand.
I don't disagree. But it'll, it'll all be solved when that's ours. And until then, I keep working through them and our people. Sometimes we do it, sometimes they do it. And sometimes it don't get done because they're not ready.
And that, and all of that is part of, of the larger overall vision that AMC brings up because we may have, so let's say the shores nineteen, nineteen eighteen building? For example, like they, they have columns and a awning that comes outside of their property. Have a chancey, like, you know, and at some point, like, you know, should everyone be allowed to do that? Just put columns and things like outside of their property on the city sidewalk like that? Like, you know, there, there's some, that, that's something to me, that, those are things that I've dealt with already previously. Where, yeah, I've, I've had people that wanted to build things like that over city main streets and it's like, yeah, you can't do that. That's not your property. Like, do your neighbors let you build a tree house? You know, because you have a tree hanging over their fence line? Like, no. So.
Anyway, the reason I brought it, I just want to make sure.
It is, and, and it, we're, we're going to have, most likely what happened is we're going to have small incremental fixes for years as we move along. You know, I mean, that, you know, we'll, 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 you know, fix something and, you know, we'll, we'll get something going and then when we maybe take in like a downtown, we might have to, like a main street, we might have to revision it. And we might have, you know, something may come up that we did not expect and we might have to make another revision.
Just like subdivision.
Yep.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, man.
We don't have, you know, there's no new items for y'all, you know, for this month. But the new items that we'll be talking about with the planning commission for the work session is next week. You know, everything I'm aware of is kind of existing stuff. But subdivision regulations, you see that. I've got the meeting schedule. We've got a draft for it, set of all the twenty twenty-five meetings. We've got a what-line adjustment for Robbins Van der Roepel trust down on Brown Road. Kind of a smaller just lot line adjustment. They have a windy driveway. It currently kind of goes between two parcels. They're adjusting the property line to be centered around the driveway. And then, uh, uh, up on Elk Road, the property that was rezoned almost two years ago to the Bendville's long center, they submitted a site plan. So it's very preliminary. We just, you know, first middle, it's been sent over to MCE and, you know, we're gonna start running through their site plan. So we've got a lot of, lot of, lot of work on keeping our engineers extra busy. Various.
Okay, this is part of yours? No. That's the next item. Thank you. We appreciate it. Next item is the R-DOT easements. And this is city property and R-DOT's contractor that's doing the appraisals and, and making the offers and trying to close on the easements. Met with me last week. And went over each of these. I've sent them to the city attorney to review and he said they do need approved because it's real estate goes through the council. And most of this is minor. And the, we'll just kind of take them in order. The top one is the list station on two sixty-four. When they'd be taking that, we would have to relocate it. They will be paying for the relocation, but they're offering to pay for the land. Or they're offering for me to donate the land. And I know they're paying for all of the relocation and its reimbursements, but they're not paying where we go under the road and where we have to bore and this is a way to offset those costs. So I'm not, I told them, no, we won't be donating it. And because we're gonna bear expense in this whole project above and beyond what they will pay, but they'll pay from estimates over ninety percent of it. So that particular piece is very small tract.
It's point oh four.
Yeah, point oh four and they're offering eight thousand dollars for it. Eight thousand seventeen. The next item is there at the Tackler Wallace Park. And that particular one, it's not all of the property outlined in blue and white. It's the little corner down there that's the triangle is all they're purchasing. Where the other street comes across. And that's for their radius. The radius for the turn. And so that little triangle there is, uh, let's see, where's it? Point oh one acres. It's four hundred and sixteen square feet. And they're offering thirty-nine hundred on it. The next one is tract seventy-seven. It's two hundred and forty-four square feet. And it is, um, there at the fire station. And it's well outside of the, you can see the area that's concreted if you go into the fire station. This is the little corner out by the driveway for the, uh, for the, uh, uh, roofing company next door. But it's the little corner there that is the fire, or the cities there at the fire station. This is for the right away.
For one twelve, right?
The two sixty-four spurred off of one twelve at the roundabout. And so.
What were they gonna do with the zip code?
Uh, their right away goes through part of it too, so I don't know exactly. They have. But on our part, they're offering twenty-seven hundred for two hundred and forty-four square feet. And then the last part, and this is something that I want a little bit more clarification than I'm gonna talk to Daniel about. Down at the golf course, we have an old metering station that's been from when we got watered from, uh, Springdale. It's the little building there on the northeast or northwest corner of that drawing. They're wanting from about the fence line out toward the ditch, just that little narrow strip that's twelve hundred and forty-five square feet. They're not wanting the part in there toward the building. There is the opportunity if we, I don't know why we would want to keep an old metering station. I've gotta get with Jeff when he's back in town and discuss is there a problem with just the large line comes up in there, but we're gonna be decommissioning it and moving it with this right away change. So my suggestion is gonna be to talk to him a little more about taking the whole property.
Isn't that where that fence is?
It's right at the entrance to his. And it's right at the fence and it's that first little building out by the fence is the metering station. And that's the four properties and that fourth one he's off, they're offering ten thousand one hundred.
That's predominantly the section from the fence.
From the fence toward the road. The other section is not included.
But your, your suggestion would be try to give it all to R-DOT?
To pursue that because we have no real use for it.
And I would like that opposed to.
Right.
In, in my opinion though.
But then in addition to that, there's a fifth one that is right along the front edge, just outside of the fence, at the sewer plant there. But it's part of what I agreement we're supposed to turn over in December or January to Brett. So I discussed it with Justin and with the engineers and it's such a small odd shaped piece of property and more than likely Brett will own it before they get out. This is closed anyway. So rather than, uh, just to complicate everything, we're probably just gonna wait until we turn it over to him and they can negotiate with him.
One thing I want to suggest that all these numbers that they gave, we're gonna see how much per acre they're, you know, at the end because we know how much they paid to other people around, which is likely more than what they're paying here. So we want to stay kind of consistent with that.
Yeah, and some of it, I think they've done, some of this is different depending on what it is and the size of it. Uh, and a one of them, it was over eight dollars a square foot. And another one, it was closer to two dollars a square foot and it just depends on.
Like where the left station is, I know.
Yeah, I know what that's sold for and I agree. And we are reviewing and looking at those things as well, but, but that is, uh, that was the preliminary meeting and that's what's under review and advisement. And some form of that will probably be in next week's meeting. The next item is RFQs.
Is it something, sorry, one second. Is it something we're gonna vote on next meeting?
Uh, that is something we may or may not be ready to vote on next meeting.
Just in.
Yeah, if we're not ready yet, we won't vote on it next week.
Okay. I didn't know if it had that good time.
I think they technically do before they plan to start processes on eminent domain. But it's far enough out and they're, they're telling people it's thirty days. But if you're making decisions and good faith efforts, they're gonna keep calling once a week for me to tell them we're working on it. So that's kind of where we are. The RFQs, uh, there's been different discussions in the council. Y'all mentioned doing something with a financial advisor for, so they could review budgets and, and make suggestions and things like that. I've got that as one of the RFQs that we will put out. Another one is for human resource services. And those are the two that we have planned at this time. And those will be worked into the budget, so if we're gonna be able to move forward with things, we need to be able to budget for. And the job descriptions. Uh, Justin is working on the job descriptions and reviewing to confirm. And those, we were getting close with some of the pay with the upcoming year and everything. We were getting close to some of the pay limits, so the time to review those and go through everything's now. I've had them with department heads. They've reviewed, they've gone to Justin to be sure that all the legalese is right in them. And we hope to have those for approval at the next meeting. The budget proposal is not ready yet. We went through some changes today with department heads. Uh, we are making significant progress. I was hoping to give y'all to present them tonight so we would have, um, a month to review them before the work session and then discussion. I will be handing them out at next week's meeting. So you'll still have three or four weeks in advance to review and before we get together for the December work session.
Is that, is that for next year?
Yeah, this is next year's budget. And then at the December work session, we will, uh, review if there's changes you want to see made or whatever. We can discuss those. And it'll give me a week to get any, uh, changes made and get them back as requested for the next meeting for approval in December.
Bullhorn will be in there?
That is not gonna be in here, but I can show you some things at work that's underway. We are, uh, I've got an architect and engineer doing a site plan and design that will fit the equipment and fit the needs.
What about the salt and sand and?
That goes, it's going to be an equipment shed, a material shed. The material shed will be for salt, sand, uh, pace. It will be for pipe racks. It will be for a city. And that's being worked on. I won't have the numbers by then, I don't think. If I do, I'll work them in next. But I do expect to propose something in that regard sometime, uh, probably right around the first April.
We voted on Bullhorn about three or four years ago.
And it was seven feet tall and inadequate.
I understand.
And so.
I understand, but we haven't done anything in four years to get the bullhorn.
Well, there's a lot going on toward that.
That's like.
And the SOPs Justin is working on, we have submitted to him for his review. The traffic light, they have, um, met with the electric company to be sure that we didn't have any setbacks. The, um, power company is concerned about exact pole placement of cables. And they're working with us. They met with them on site last week. And we should have something ready to submit to the, uh, R-DOT within the next week or so.
Okay, do we know when, like, approximately?
No, we, I mean, y'all, y'all agreed to waive the, uh, that's gonna be in this month's, uh, packet next week for approval, so we've got the formal document. They normally take five to six weeks to permit and they've been responding to us in three days. So I expect within a week after we submit, we should have our permit. And when we get the permit by doing what we did or what we're doing with waiving, we should get the order. He said there's a slight, uh, delay on the posts themselves, but we could be, we could see a light by the end of January or something like in February.
He's gonna ask because somebody talked to me, Rob, since when was that saying? When they're gonna get it because every week there's something in there.
Yeah, and if we get the stuff sooner, we'll, we'll have it up sooner, but.
I have a question.
Okay.
In this thing, policies and goals that we got from municipalities. I don't do some of all these and someone very interesting. I know this is a resolution to require R-DOT be responsible for mainly maintaining traffic control signals. But it says in the beginning, whereas municipalities located on state highways often require R-DOT to install traffic control signals on state highways for the benefit of public safety of citizens. And whereas R-DOT will help cover some of the costs for the initial installation of the traffic control signals on the state highway. Have we received any funds for that?
When we did the other light, they did the full cost of it. But we had to wait eight years. They do it on their schedule. And they've said that this light is not gonna be put in because they're moving the track. And so they are not contributing to this one. But when we did our traffic study and that was gonna be the highway, that was a three-way stop and they, uh, from the time that they determined there was enough, uh, traffic to justify the light, they told us we could bear the full expense and do it to their standards at that time. Or we could wait and they would put it on their ten-year plan. And eight years into their ten-year plan, they built the light.
I guess you could sue R-DOT over things like that.
I don't think it would do much good. The community building is coming close to the end. We should be in there within the next month. And that, if, if you haven't been in there and taken a look at it, I'll be glad to escort people over there in the day when, when you can see in there and the doors are open. But it really looks nice and we're making progress there.
And when do we anticipate that being completed enough for you?
The building should be completed in the next two to four weeks. The furniture has been ordered and should be in there, should be here close to the same timeframe. The, uh, I just got the quote on the sound system today. It's about thirty-four thousand dollars. And it's wireless and don't have all the cables like this. It's much more reliable. It's not a nineteen eighty-something version like this. It's brand-new technology. And wireless Bluetooth and all of that.
So how many people did we contact?
Uh, that's the one that so far has responded. But I, I mean, there are others in that business and we can absolutely get other quotes. But that was designed to that building.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it under warranty? Would it be under, would they warranty their, their work? For so long, does it go with warranty?
They, it's new equipment and the, the, the equipment's warranty because the manufacturer that they were.
Can you figure out when you bring it to us with the numbers out of the warranty?
I, I can kind of speak on this because I, I contacted the guy about this. And, and on that quote he finally got me today, there was a warranty in there as well. I don't remember how long it was, but there is a warranty on their work.
On their work and the equipment?
I would assume, but I can find out.
I mean, it'd be nice to know.
This, this equipment is completely wireless, so we won't have to run any wires anywhere. They're, they're, they'll build a box in one of the closets. Basically, we come in, hit a button, turn it on, hit another button, put them where live, we're going.
No microphone phones up here or we weren't?
You would have mics, but they don't have wires to them. They're good too. There would be a mic on the disposal.
Wireless, everything. Be wireless camera.
There's a camera that'll be mounted above the door facing the council area and it's wireless and Bluetooth. So everything would be, uh.
And that's mainly where a lot of the expenses come because everything is wireless.
But it's also.
It's gonna be hard to run wires in that little building now.
Well, and turn it up, yeah.
Um, you know, as they were parent, when they tore it apart a year ago, that would have been the time to run wires, but then we didn't know we were gonna do this.
Wireless works, but what, my, uh, my question is then, I think I heard, but, do they, is that turnkey, like, they come in and.
They're gonna do all. I'm not gonna use the word turkey, but that's, that's not.
But they'll send it all up.
The same way with everybody.
So they'll send it all up so it's working?
Yes, yes, they will come in, they will send it all up.
Provide a service to do that. That's part of it.
That's everything. They'll, they'll get the, the, the equipment, install it, put it up. There we go.
We can find out the twenty-five thousand dollars it's been on, just call it a million dollar building.
I think this is trying to focus on.
I got.
Oh my gosh.
Is there maintaining the equipment because of those kind of technology? I know something goes wrong with it. Are they servicing it or?
Well, like I said, I just got the quote today. I just looked over it really brief and then handed it to the mayor because it was about five o'clock when I got it.
It's kind of nice that I have a service agreement.
The, the good thing is the guy lives here in Cave, um, that, that would head this up. He, he lives over in Wellington and I've known him for many, many years. And so, um, this would, I can absolutely ask him that. What, you know, what kind of service can we expect? Is something where to go wrong? Can we call him? Things like that. That's a lot of money. Uh, there's no doubt that's a lot of money for a lot of electronic equipment.
Those, the equipment usually, I mean, I promise you, you're gonna have some issue, that's something.
Sure, some, something will pop or something will break or get overheated or, uh, maybe it's, it's electronics. I mean, anything, everything could happen.
It's thirty-four something.
Almost thirty-five.
Almost thirty-five.
Tables and chairs are how much? Twelve?
Yeah, we got those through the prison.
I understand.
So, uh, labor's at a minimal on that deal.
It was eleven something, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, twenty-five grand, dude.
I have one question.
Yes.
Sorry. I don't like the mic, but.
We just don't think that's. Never mind.
Uh, have we contacted anybody else? I mean, at the same time, not waiting for one to come in and then the other one. Do we, we have, because usually we get two, three. Have they contacted?
We haven't contacted anyone else that's been willing to give a beer. I have contacted a couple other people that I heard were in that business and they aren't. They're more in the operational side, like at a, an event venue. And they're not as much, they know the equipment. They don't sell the equipment, so I'm still looking.
So we haven't contacted anybody that's willing to give a beer.
Right.
I feel honestly, I'm, I'll be, I mean, I'm not questioning, I just think that there's gotta be some other people.
I'm sure there are.
Something, everything that's good on there, they're gonna, I just don't want to wait until last minute and then make the decision. Somehow, and of course, the gentleman that was running, he likes to contact me to see if he's.
He, when I contacted him, he really did not want to be in the middle of all of this. He gave me information about a particular type of microphone. And when someone else reached out to him to get a little more information, he made it real clear that he, that's really all he wanted to do was explain the microphone.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying that I had a name or somebody else that does it all. I'm sure we can Google it and find that.
Yeah, I can find somebody.
I just don't want to wait and because I already have to be spending all this money, we want to be able to get in there and be ready to.
Right.
Have they contacted the other cities to see who voted they had used? I mean, the city of Centers has just built a city hall.
Yeah, they did build it and I've talked to them and theirs is a different type of system. And I, I will double check who they used, but they, uh, they did build a city hall and a court building. And I know in the court building, they have the open rafters with the black above it, so you don't see what's above there. And they have microphones all in the ceiling. And you don't have microphones here, but you can just about lean over and whisper to your neighbor and it gets broadcast.
I mean, it doesn't matter at this point. I'm sure that that company can do wireless just like any other company.
Right.
But we're just looking for options.
Right, and I'm not sure it ain't the same company. But I will check.
And my thing is that I don't, you know, if we're gonna get two-bay or three-bay, let's just do it.
Now, right.
Now, don't wait till we get one.
Right. The rope signs for Wager Road, we have the signs on the post and we have a blown driver, post driver. And we've ordered a new one that should be here by, it should be here this week. And so that should, the signs should start coming up really quickly.
That postal driver should still be under warranty. It's been.
It's not, it, it's been too many years. It's not driven a lot of posts, but it was like, it was here when I got here.
No, it wasn't. We just bought this one about a year or so ago.
The.
Because Larry, Larry's the one that bought it.
Well, we looked it up. We talked to the manufacturer. The manufacturer had the records. And the record showed it was out of warranty.
We had to. We had one before and it quit working. And then Larry bought one about a year and a half ago.
We used, it's a one-year warranty and we used the serial number from the machine to confirm with the manufacturer it's not under warranty. They made it real clear that there's a problem with those motors and you can put a lot of other motors on there for about seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars each.
Vaughn, Vaughn, uh, Small Engine Repair works on those.
That's who we sent it to, who put us in touch with the manufacturer.
Okay. Well, I knew it wasn't very old.
It's not real old and the.
So we got it way before you, uh, way after you started.
Well, I knew that, um, that it, when they looked up the serial number, it was well out of warranty. This was just a few weeks ago, three or four weeks ago. And it was well out of warranty and it's, looks good, but it, they won't, it's expensive to fix. And then you still got something that they know don't work. So we're not going back with that brain. The last item, or last two items, Ridgewood repairs. Um, I think the contractor thinks he's done, but the ditch is not complete in my opinion.
Have you been, did you go pick it up yet?
I went, I looked at it on my way back from lunch the last two days, but I haven't got out and walked it yet.
Can you get out and walk it? It, at the base, it doesn't look like it did anything. Mike, you're, you said you went up there?
At the entrance, it comes up to my chest, up in this area.
Yeah.
Down it, in the ditch, it comes up mid-thigh on me. And it's real steep. I met with one of the ladies with the P O A this afternoon, she'd called me. And they can't hold it. It, it's so steep and they've had somebody run off before this and tore up the fence. It hadn't been fixed yet, I guess because of insurance purposes. But somebody runs off in there now, they're gonna roll. I mean, it's that deep. Two wheels going there, she's going on her side. Uh, it's not, it's not well. I, I don't know what it takes. She said that she had talked to you and the R-DOT had gave specifications, but that it was not cost-effective. You know, that's what I was told.
Yeah, and that's what I told y'all, it was sixty thousand dollars and they wanted.
It's R-DOT's property. Why don't they get their hind end up here and fix it?
Right, and I don't disagree with that, but when we were asking to cross R-DOT's property, we had to have a permit. And when we asked for the permit, their response was that while we fix this, we have to fix the other as part of that permit approval. And when we saw over sixty thousand dollars in repairs to be able to do a few thousand of our own, then at that point, we went back and said, we're not going to concrete your ditch and we're not gonna be able to do all of this. And we need to come up with something more reasonable. And the reasonable was to clean out the ditch, to take out all of the eroded area and decide it over.
Well, it's eroding again.
Yeah, and they haven't completely sided it.
Also, this lady, well, it's gonna wash up, it's four foot deep.
I understand.
They, where the, comes out from the fence, from the property down there where crosses the highway, they've bolted this grate to that culvert.
Right.
And it's just gonna build stuff up. This lady told me it was supposed to be a full.
It will open. It's not.
You stand there and take them screws loose?
Oh, it's, it's not, it, it is, there's open on the side, there's already a whole bunch of leaves and stuff stuck in there. It is the most, it looks very, it looks like a resident wrecked it. It does not look professional, it's, it's very.
I'll take a look at that as well, but I do know that.
I would probably park and, and walk down there.
Why can't we put, if we're gonna do this, if we run a culvert down through there and just cover it up and let the water run down to the deal?
Because it will be much more expensive to, for that and it is R-DOT's. It's not ours. Our city shouldn't be paying, I don't like the fact we're paying what we paid so far. But that would be taking us back towards sixty thousand.
I don't, she asked me what she could do, so I suggested they come next week. But what we need to do is tell them, they need to get ahold of, uh, Esther and, uh, Underwood to get with R-DOT to fix this. That's dangerous. I mean, that is really dangerous. You, somebody's gonna have to weed eat them banks and it's not gonna be them all being, and it's not gonna be R-DOT because they don't come twice a year.
They have a contract with a company that right now has been weed eating the banks. They mow the flatter areas and they weed eat the banks on that. That has always had a steep bank on the backside. Not that deep, I, I agree, but it's always had a steep bank on the back and they've always weed eaten it.
Now, when it comes to the mowing part, Mike, and I asked up to this new resident, um, and she talked about the mowing part. And I said, well, you know, just as any repair. I said, I don't, she was, we're gonna have to pay more money. And I said, well, that's part of owning land, you know? They, they wanted this done, got it done. I said, as a council member, I would not vote for any money to go for any mowing of any kind, that's on them.
I, I'm just saying that's what it's gonna take, I didn't say we're.
Well, no, 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 I know that, but I was letting you know my response to her. I said, as a council member, it is not, I would not vote to reimburse, like, the P O A, the cost of mowing or anything like that, because that is a waste of city funds. I, I let her know that, so I said, let's take that out of the equation. I don't wanna talk about that part. But looking at it and hearing your feedback as well, the bottom part is very concerning. It doesn't look, it doesn't look like they, all they did was ditch it out, make it so deep. It feel like the water's gonna rush down their pool, losing it in Brentwood, Brentwood, with that water and flood on a different spot, you know? I just don't, I don't see the benefit of knowing anything to begin with, in my personal opinion. But, um, I, I spoken to the mayor and told him I was going out there. And, um, I asked him if he would please have Daniel to look at it and give us an opinion.
Contacted Daniel.
Because, because we are all engineers, but Mike and I, and MC very much.
Why see Daniel for not, why send Daniel for not going to anything?
He could give his opinion to the contractors and, you know, have we paid them yet?
We have not.
So, and then that's, you know what I mean, like he could.
And he can also give his opinion to whether or not they've done what was requested by R-DOT. If they haven't, they haven't met their obligation and shouldn't get paid yet.
So that, that's why I was saying, that's why I asked the mayor to please ask Daniel. I thought maybe Daniel would be here tonight, but there was really no reason for him to be here at all. But, um, to ask Daniel to go out and peek before the meeting, but the mayor said he's not gonna be here. But, um, meanwhile, I think it's really important. Um, I see a huge problem with it and hearing your feedback as well. I just think it's gonna erode away down deeper. And, um, I agree with the car, car wall because if that car gets, okay, that, that first part, it's, it's going. And then, and then that road isn't very wide to begin with. Something happened, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. I just wouldn't, I couldn't get through my main entrance and so, you know, I took Ford. But, um, that would be a huge impact on traffic depending on the day and there's nowhere else to go.
I mean, are that is working with us on the lights, right?
Yes.
Very quick. So what can we do to make it work because of this project?
First off, I need to see if the contractor's not had it completed properly.
Well, enough.
And then from there, we can reach out to R-DOT if, based on Daniel's observation.
But I think, yeah, I think it's a great thing to have Daniel get out as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And hopefully give us an update next week on his thoughts and if they actually followed the plan.
Yep.
But I guess, did you have anything else, uh, do you think anything else, Mike? Do you think anything else about that?
No.
What?
R-DOT. You don't R-DOT.
But I don't, I don't, I don't know at the bottom there, I don't think they did anything. And I think, it doesn't look like there's, at top, yes, they have a clear track, but at the bottom, it's just all jumbled mess. I feel there's no cut out, it's just, I think my kids could do a better job.
Well, if we put some concrete down there, you can see some of the material that they, it's already eroded the concrete away. And there's places of some kinda tile down, I don't know where tile will come from in here, but there's a big bunch of it.
It, it is, I don't know. It's kind of a mess.
It's R-DOT, that R-DOT deal with, no. Just like the sidewalk here in town, it looks so good.
I mean, you're, I mean, you're correct.
But we're gonna spend a million dollars on community build. Oh, boy.
And the last thing that I've got is the iWork software that I told y'all about at the last meeting. Plan to have that at this meeting for approval. And then, uh, it takes about two months, so it'll be in next year's budget. And, um, but it takes about two months to get it implemented, so that'll put it into next year. And there's discounts by doing it this year.
And, um, for those of you that want that to get our public works.
That's public works, building, it's software that will communicate between the two and make it, uh, much better for doing reports, much better for, you can set your own parameters, get reports done and include the, uh, uh, comments and stuff that's been entered where our current system won't do that. And it will also, it, they go out and do the inspection on the, uh, on the lot, the water line on the lot. And when the lot line's completed, it will flag that it's time to drop the meter into the water department. So you don't have to have that. Um, it, it flags the communication between the two sides. And there's a lot of things it does, it work, it has things to benefit planning. Um, both of our inspectors use it in their other jobs with tiny town and with Benton County. And everyone that I've talked to or heard is used it, is very pleased with it.
And those at home, it'll, it, those that have problems with any work orders, then it's just because they can't see the notes, it'll help prioritize those, correct? So the most important and most crucial such as sewer would be on top and stuff like that.
Two more things. Have, have we heard anything on the grant money for the fixed field joint?
Not yet.
Have we heard anything about the roof on the fire station?
Um, we got a mayor, or we have. We got, the mayor got an email this afternoon. Um, he wanted to bring us in front of the, the work session.
Right.
Um, looking to get a structural engineer and we'll probably bring it in front of the council by the end of the month to get it approved. Um, Justin said that the cost won't be very, this cost won't be very expensive to get it looked at. And then we'll get an evaluation coming.
And then.
I think Justin's in the.
He's sending it out to everyone and he.
When did that come out?
This afternoon.
Oh, okay, I checked mine like in three.
And, uh, part of it, the, um, the engineer, because of the pricing and, and unless it drives, something comes up that they're not expecting to drive it higher, it's gonna be done as a subcontractor through, uh, the, uh, law firm.
Did Justin on his email say that we're bad enough to discuss it?
And the, as far as the details of what he finds, it's all part of potential litigation. And therefore he won't be giving updates or discussing that in a public forum.
Perfect. I did have one thing. Um, scissor tail drainage on that new development that's gonna about with them. Got an email about water drainage and, I mean, against robbery. Did you hear anything about that? Did everybody get that email?
I got the email late last week and that's part of my discussions I'm having with, uh, Daniel to review it to see if that's something that we need to be getting in touch with the developer to do. If that's something outside the development, because from the picture, I can't tell exactly where it is.
I can't tell. When you are, can you give us an update next week?
Sure.
On that? Can we put that on the scissor tail update? Um, or whatever you wanna call it, so that they know if they're listening at home that it was brought up, council didn't receive it. And, um, you're looking into that. But like, just like the, the builder with Brentwood and all that dirt that was coming into Brentwood, you know, we found out there that, um, they weren't using the proper retention to keep their stuff maintained and it shouldn't have ran over. So to me, without seeing more pictures, it appears to be that, that might be going on.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
We will be reviewing that. And there was one more thing that, uh, Chief was going to discuss.
So our vacation times, we talked about it back in August, it went for my notes and I guess I thought it passed. But we were increasing to twelve hours instead of eight because they're twenty-five hour employees. And then the vacation carryover, you know, the hours they can carry over, they're right now it's minimal. If I have people taking, I'll, I'll, I'll be the only one there to try to burn all the vacations, so I'm trying to.
How much can you carry over per year right now?
It's up to the, up to the department for regular city employees. Now, I play the police department a little different.
Yeah, ours is, uh, two hundred and forty vacation hours.
Is yours not that much?
Well, because we're not, then Justin, you know, it's a very full-time fire department.
So you're still on the.
So I'm still catching that. So increase the overtime pay to twelve because a lot of cities like Bentonville's eleven point something, we're at eight. And since we're twenty-four hour employees.
Twelve is expensive.
So, and I thought it already went through, can't look at the minutes, me and the mayor, we called the city attorney, we got another question we like. And so I'm hoping maybe get that on the, the council's agreement.
Yeah, sounds great.
And I would like to recommend that the council retroactive that pay back to January for the first of the year for those holidays. So there are twelve-hour holidays from January one instead of having to be changed for just November, December.
If we can change this in November, I, I fully agree.
Absolutely.
Yeah, why not? I don't, I don't think you have a good recommendation here.
Sure, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Did I hear a motion to adjourn?
Remove to adjourn.